It should be now.
All righty.
Is the green light on?
Cam, I just about to start my council meeting.
Cash.
They said to bring it tonight. I would assume there was one. Okay, I'll have to text you. All right.
All good?
We're good.
Cool. All righty, everyone ready?
Sure. Can I have 10 seconds possibly?
Yep, for sure.
Regular scout meeting, April 1st, Sacred Heart Church.
Oh, yeah. Oh.
This is my birthday next week. You'll never hit my birthday because I'm always on a...
That's all right. Well, happy pre-birthday.
Thank you.
All righty, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, we'll call this meeting to order 7:02 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Von Kriks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Kiowaattin.
Present.
Haye.
Here.
Peruzzi.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Coram present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we have is the minute approval for the March 20th, 2023 regular meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. I gotta get used to looking up top, too. All right, next item we have here is public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment is reserved for items that we have on today's agenda. We'll have another opportunity for public comment at the close of the meeting. We'll go to those in person first and then those on the Zoom. If you're on the Zoom and wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function under either participants or reactions. The asset everyone wishing to speak, please begins with their name and address. Direct all questions through me and please limits their comment to five minutes. Not seeing any on Zoom. Mr. Zachowski, by chance, sir?
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful, okay. Make sure. Feel free.
Thank you. My name is Chris Zachowski, 2834 Fifth Street. I believe you have a letter in front of you that I submitted to the clerk Friday late. That's why I'm late on the agenda. It explains some of the problems where issues we're having with some slow drainage and flooding problems on the Fifth Street alley. And here are some additional pictures that my fiance has gotten over the weekend of some of the neighbors flooding. Pictures speak a thousand words. The access... There's been a problem with this flooding in this alley for decades, from what I hear. I've only owned my property for three years. Numerous times, I've had up to 10 inches of water in a 1,500 square foot garage. Neighbor has fixed his garage. A week later, it floods. He's done putting any more money into his. Young kid, I feel sorry for him. I've been privy to some drainage drawings from the city. And I don't know if it's a design problem, a maintenance problem, or what, but there's like some pinch points on the drainage here where the flow goes. But my main concern is the alley is a dead-end run. So from one end of the alley, which is under West Road Viaduct and Mann's parking lot, it's a dead-end run. It flows to the middle of the alley. From the middle of that alley, it goes across the Mann's parking lot or their gravel drive. If that ever gets plugged, we're never going to get rid of the water. I've had contact with the Building Department, DPW. I've had contact with the Engineering Department, and Christopher was on the board, a city resident engineer at one time. I don't know his name. I apologize. His last name, I apologize. He said that there was a possibility of using this alley next to 2876. It's a 16.5-foot easement, public alley easement, that he was going to try to tie in from this catch basin or the alley dead-end runs across to Fifth Street, which is a 21-inch drain. I don't know if that's possible. Engineering would probably have to look at it because I don't know where the drop is on the Fifth Street because the alley is lower than Fifth Street. So to get water to run uphill might be difficult, but if the drop on Fifth is low enough, it might be feasible. But something has to be done. It's gone on long enough, and we get the runoff from the West Road Bridge. Been to Wayne County. Wayne County says it's Trenton's problem. I go to DPW. I complain about the bridge. It's Wayne County's problem. The storm drains, I believe you have a couple of pictures of the storm drains coming from the Viaduct. They're supposed to be, and I don't have the drawings for it, but this is the bridge. There's a 24-inch storm sewer here that I believe all of those are supposed to go into. They're broken off at the ground. It just floods the alley more. Mann's, and a Mann's, is 12 inches higher than the alley. It's a waterfall of silt and sediment that comes down that alley. I've personally walked that alley many times, used post hole diggers and things to catch, clean the catch basins out. It's overwhelming. We're getting inundated with water there all the time. It seeps into our basements. So that's one of the reasons I'm here. And then there's also something that is sitting on the Planning Commission right now. I went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago. They want to pave over a vacant lot that's six, next to 2876. And at the beginning of that meeting, they said they want to pave over the vacated alley. I don't believe that alley easement is vacated. If it is, my mistake, but I don't know if that was ever vacated. I don't have any problem with them paving over that parking lot. None whatsoever, no objections. But if that is an easement and an access to get from the Fifth Street alley to Fifth Street for a drain, it may be the cheapest and easiest way to alleviate our problem on Fifth Street. Before they pave. And I would challenge this board to show me another alley in this city that's as disgusting as that one that we have behind our homes. Thank you for your time.
Good timing there, but no, thank you very much, Mr. Zachowski, just for bringing this to our attention, too, and sending those pictures. I know all of council got to see them over the weekend before the meeting.
I know it's short notice.
But like you said, it's something that's been a problem that's gone on long before you lived there and that, you know, we could talk about why that is and all that, but the only thing that we can do is make it better.
I'm here for a solution, not a blame game.
So if we could actually get a motion to refer this to administration.
Some of support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Just to wrap that up, but so what, I mean, I know our DPW director and our engineer met about it even this morning, and maybe there is a path forward for this.
And, okay, now, that brings me to one more question if I have a couple of minutes. If you do come up with a solution, are the citizens that it affects going to be notified of that possible solution? Like, you know... Like, you know, are you, I believe that Dean, Dean, you gave me a call this evening. But am I, are we gonna be notified of what's gonna go on?
When the, and do you wanna go on about the notification, just for when the construction or anything?
Or anything that goes on?
So like, like we talked about earlier, everything, the way I'd like to handle this is more on an emergency fashion, unless, unless people feel otherwise or whatever. But our plan is to get the engine, engineer out there again to make some confirmations and everything that we can do it, and then we would scope and bid the project out. And then the other part of it is the alley was planned to be graded and regravelled this year. I mean, notification, I mean, we, with sewer upgrades, we don't normally make a public notification unless we're gonna cut off your sewer.
Right.
Access or your, your water access. But I can, I can assure you that we're gonna expedite as fast as I can, and I know I have support here from council.
Have you entertained the idea of using that, that easement from the alley to Fifth Street at all?
I believe that is the plan.
Good. I think, I mean, I don't know what the numbers look like.
Right.
As far as the fall goes, but.
Right, and that's, and that's the one thing the engineer is gonna have to confirm. I can assure you that it will be addressed. And if it isn't going to be addressed, you'll get a phone call from me directly, and I'll explain to you the who, the what, the why. But I, honestly, it's, from what I know so far, it, it's very solvable and we'll make it right.
Well, that would be great. That would be great. Yeah. Is there any word from Wayne County about the bridge and the drainage?
Mainly the drainage on it. They cleaned one drain out, and it's great.
But it still just goes on the road.
If those drains worked, all that water wouldn't come into the alley, and it would help a lot.
It, yeah.
Right, yeah.
It's an overwhelming, slow system.
Right. Wayne County is aware of those issues and those challenges, and we've had a number of conversations with Wayne County. I will tell you, or I think I mentioned it earlier or whatever, but Wayne County is in the design phase for rebuilding that Viaduct. But historically, the water has not been put anywhere appropriate. We've had clogged drains, I think, are cleaned out on a regular basis, even down by the DPW yard. And not to pass it off on Wayne County, but the, the Viaduct and the easements next to the Viaduct, that is all Wayne County. That is not ours. We, we do go above and beyond by maintaining and, and doing work on that, but it's, it's generally a Wayne County challenge.
Well, I would never say that I'm an engineer or anything, but from what I can gather off of these drawings, there are a couple of avenues that could work. I mean, there's some 24 inch mains there, a 21 inch main. The ones behind our property aren't marked, so I don't know. And I don't know how dated this drawing is either.
Right.
But I think there's some easier.
I'm highly confident Mr. Sabak will be able to come up with a very affordable, rapid solution. I mean, he is top notch in, in his field. I have 100% faith that between him and Mr. Sargent, we'll, we'll be able to remedy this.
And you would agree that we shouldn't have to be putting up with this?
Like I told you on the phone, 100%, this is, you have my apologies. I'm not gonna blame anybody. It is what it is. It's been there for at least 20 years.
I can't believe some of those people have put.
It's terrible.
I've seen railroad ties floating down that alley.
Yeah, shouldn't, shouldn't happen.
People are parking their cars on so that they can get to.
Yep. It, it shouldn't happen, but it is, and.
Okay.
We'll make it right.
Well. I'll be watching. With bated breath. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Doesn't matter. Dean did a fine job, so.
And in no further discussions, unanimously so ordered, so yeah, we'll get that squared away with administration. Alrighty, and don't feel obligated to stay, guys. Don't worry. So next item we have on the agenda, we have for appointments, for a planning commission here, requesting this body's approval for my appointment of Keith Russo to the Planning Commission for a term expiring April 1st, 2026. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti.
Yes.
Kieba Watten.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Peruzzi.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rezepa.
Obstein.
Von Kriks.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Alright, next item, well, three straight items that we have here from the City Controller. I'll, Ms. Sol to take the mic here. First up being budget amendments for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. I have provided the detail, oh my goodness, of the budget amendments for the quarter ending March 31st, 2023, with different explanations for the changes that are required and why.
I would so move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Next up, we have the proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 budget.
Thank you, Mayor. A public hearing will be, will be held by City Council in the council chambers at Trenton, at Trenton City Hall, 2803rd Street, on May 15th at 6:30 PM on the adoption of the proposed city budget for fiscal year 2023-24. There will be printed copies of the budget at the library in the City Clerk's office, as well as a copy on our website for examination from now until May 15th.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Place that on file and hold the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. And lastly, the resolution authorizing publication of notice of intent to issue capital improvement bonds.
Okay, this, this resolution is the first step in financing the one trash truck, the loader truck, and the pool improvements approved by council at prior meetings. This resolution serves two main purposes. One is to notify the public of our intent and declaration of intent to reimburse.
So moved.
Support. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Ms. Sol.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent, here for two items. First up being requesting a one-year lawn mowing contract extension to Turf Concepts.
Thank you, Mayor. Last year, city forces once again resumed mowing duties of approximately 65% of the city-owned properties. The other 35% was cut by Turf Concepts, who has been with the city since 2020. The combination of DPW crews along with Turf Concepts resulted in a much improved appearance in our parks and public spaces. Therefore, I believe it's in the city's best interest to extend a one-year contract extension with Turf Concepts in the amount of $64,200. This cost includes a 5% increase from last year due to rising costs in manpower, fuel, and equipment. This one-year extension would be under the same terms and conditions outlined in the original contract. Funds are budgeted in Parks and Facilities' contractual mowing account.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much. And then next up, we have DPS requests for a quote approval for Camp's mobile tub grinding service.
Thank you. On February 22nd, we experienced a historic ice storm, which caused widespread damage to trees throughout the city. DPW crews spent the following month cleaning up all the debris. As a result of this, we have a massive pile of limbs and logs in our yard, taking up a large portion of our space. It would take our crews weeks to haul all of this material to the landfill, along with paying hefty tipping fees due to the weight of the logs. I reached out to the only two mobile tub grinding services that I could find in lower Michigan to obtain quotes. Both companies responded, but only one provided a quote. Therefore, I am requesting approval for the quote for Camps to provide this service in the total amount of $7,000. Funds are available in sanitation account number 101-528-928.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Kieba Watten?
Kevin, that includes an operator as well for the equipment. We're kinda no touch. They bring in the tub grinder, they do all the grinding.
Some.
Point them to the pile, they, you load them in the trans trailers and.
Correct.
Get it out of there.
They'll haul it all offsite and everything.
It's not a bad price for what you've got to take away.
I agree. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much, Kevin. Alright, next up, we have the Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Beaker, for three items here. First up being the ARPA Spark Grant Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. As noticed in previous meetings, the city of Trenton was awarded the Michigan Spark Grant for use at the Kennedy Aquatic Center, thanks to many helping hands. Michigan Department of Natural Resources, in order to meet federal requirements, requires a formal acceptance of the awarded grant. In turn, I ask that your honorable body approve the acceptance of the Michigan Spark Grant and allow the city clerk and mayor to sign on behalf of the city of Trenton for the agreement set forth.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Page?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I was at the SEMCOG quarterly meeting, and people were coming up to me congratulating the city of Trenton for getting the Spark Grant. And I believe they said, and I heard it quickly, but I believe it's, we're only one of three in the entire southeast region, if not the state, but I think it's more of the southeast region. So it's quite an honor for us to get that. So again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Next, Kennedy Hot Water Storage Tanks.
Kennedy Recreation Center has six total hot water storage tanks that provide hot water to the majority of the facility's locker rooms and zambonis. These tanks began to leak to the point of dumping water into a locker room below and shorting out our light fixtures. The replacement of the tanks was anticipated in the budget year, preferably in the summer. However, the major leak required us to move a little quicker than anticipated. Quint Plumbing has quoted and mobilized for the emergency repair in the amount of $19,500. The repair will cover the installation of six hot water storage tanks, new valves, reworking of the pipes, and make reinstallation easier in the future. The project was budgeted and will come from account 208-696-933, the equipment maintenance.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. And then lastly, the festival entertainment contracts.
Our entertainment chairperson has secured the sound and lighting package, as well as a family entertainment acts for the 2023 Summer Festival. Contractual agreements which are attached have been issued for IMIJ Sound and Lighting and the entire festival, for the entire festival, in the amount of $6,900. And Carrie and Paul Group for the entire festival dates of amount, in the amount of $5,875. All of these expenditures have been approved by the festival committee, are within the festival entertainment budget, and will pay through sponsors and revenue generated from this year's festival.
So moved.
Support. Support.
Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Alright, next up, we have from our wastewater treatment plant superintendent, Mr. O'Day, two items here. The first one being laboratory and administration building floor replacement.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens, fellow department heads. Yes, the first one is for the, you said the chlorine control valve?
Uh, this one, sorry, it was the laboratory and administration building floor replacement.
Oh, okay, that's good enough. Okay, the floor in the laboratory and the administration building, it's one building. It's 40 years old. It's part of our asset management program at the plant. We have all our buildings included in our equipment to be replaced as they get old. So 40 years old and disintegrated pretty bad. It's making it difficult to clean. So we solicited quotes from reputable companies in the area down here, and we recommend to go with Metro Carpet and Floors in the sum of $63,008 to replace this floor.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. And then we'll go to the request to authorize payment for replacement chlorine control valve.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, the wastewater plant is requesting to replace a replacement Hydroinstrument Series 230 Chlorine Control Valve. It's a long name. To replace the one that was installed in 2012. This chlorine control valve provides an accurate dose and control of the chlorine chemical gas into our final effluent water to provide disinfection, which is a requirement of this state permit for the wastewater plant. So it was recommended by our chlorine repair vendor to replace this one. We actually did a little, did a little investigation, and the valve that we currently had was, had a lot more extra bells and whistles on it, so we actually found one, the Series 230, which was a little bit cheaper, but it did the same function. So I'm not sure why we had the more expensive valve on there 10 years ago, but that's how it was. So we went ahead and sized this one to replace the one that's existing there, anyway. So this valve is $4,137. Let's replace that one. So that's what I'm asking to.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much, Sean.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, next up here, we've got a resolution from myself here about pension grant funding. We're announced, I'll just read this here very briefly. Whereas the city of Trenton has taken financially difficult steps to stabilize its pension program and get its pension costs and liabilities under control. And whereas these steps followed best practices established by the state of Michigan and kept the city of Trenton operationally viable in the face of enormous financial pressures. Whereas HB 5054 of 2022 would have divided $250 million between the city of Trenton and other communities like it that made the tough decisions and follow those best practices. And whereas the city of Trenton and others like it are ineligible for $750 million in pension relief allocated by the state in 2022, despite experiencing the same pension-related financial stresses as those who will receive that relief. And whereas these stresses have been amplified by market losses in 2022 and a volatile market in 2023. Whereas the $250 million would have immeasurable impact on our ability to address our pension liabilities, maintain employment levels, and provide the services our taxpayers depend upon. Whereas both the $750 million allocated and the $250 million requested here had broad bipartisan support in the House a year ago. And whereas 5054 created an equitable balance between those with pension, those with pensions the House considered substantially underfunded and those who had followed best practices to achieve a higher front funding ratio. Whereas unallocated revenues are available to the state in 2023 to again make this pension assistance equitable by helping those communities struggling with pension costs, but ineligible for the $750 million. Therefore, be it resolved, the city council of the city of Trenton asks the state of Michigan Legislature and governor's office to revisit HB 5054, and that the legislature and governor give bipartisan support to the inclusion of $250 million in the 2023 state budget to be divided between communities, including the city of Trenton, that meet the best practices required in that bill.
So moved.
Support. Support.
It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you all very much. Alright, we have one late communication this evening from our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Sorry, I didn't bring that out to you. Before you have a motion to approve the, yes, thank you. I should be the one prepared. Approve the annual assessment to the guidance center that provides substance abuse and behavior halved in Down River area. We traditionally do contribute $8,000 annually to the guidance center. And in this case, it's just a renewal of that. Funding would come from 101-999-883.000. And just a little footnote that we, this is actually very affordable for us right now because part of our opiate settlement that we've been receiving chunks of over the last year, we're gonna be able to apply those funds to this contribution, and it'll, it'll have a direct impact right on our community. So ask that you move to approve. Thank you.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Dean.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I also have a late item. So I would like to request to hold a closed session of city council for the purpose of discussing litigation, potential litigation, and labor negotiations following the regular council meeting of April 17th, 2023.
So moved. Or support, sorry.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Benedetti.
Yes.
Kieba Watten.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Peruzzi.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rezepa.
Yes.
Von Kriks.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Alright, thank you, and thank you, Mayor Proton, Page, for that. We'll kick it over to you, actually, here, as well for dispersments and statements and then reports.
Thank you. I'd like to move to approve the authorized dispersments of April 3rd, 2023 in the amount of $497,225.34.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
And I'd like to move to receive and place on file the Board of Review minutes dated March 2023.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, we'll go to other council business now here. I, very brief, obviously, we'll have our budget study session immediately following this meeting, so for those, I will keep this same Zoom open for those on Zoom, so no need to log off and log back in. But do want to thank all of our department heads for all the effort put into this process. It's never the most fun or easy, but all things considered, I feel really, really good about where we were able to be and get to for that matter budget-wise. I'll obviously go into more detail about that later, but it was, I kind of alluded to it at a previous meeting, but it was definitely the easiest one we've gone through since I've been in this position. And now that doesn't necessarily mean it was the most fun or recorded the easiest decisions and all, but in terms of being straightforward because, you know, of the excellent work of our department heads, not only between budgets but leading up to this one too, made for a lot of easier decisions for that matter. So look forward to all of our discussion and all of the input amongst council, both tonight and then Wednesday evening and beyond that too. So other than that, I don't have anything further this evening until you get to hear me talk more later, but we'll go to Councilman Peruzzi first this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
All righty, thank you, Councilman, Councilman Cabo Watten.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. You know, Mayor, I'd like to thank you and the city administrator, as well as the department heads for, for the work on this budget, looking forward to going through it. And, you know, every year, it's, there's some creative, there's some creative outside of the box thinking, and I look forward to seeing that again this year. Seems like we're always able to pull, you know, everything we need together and still provide great service to the residents. So thank you all for that. Just a reminder that on Friday at Elizabeth Park is the marshmallow drop. So if you have kids, that's going to be going on on Friday. They drop the marshmallows from a helicopter, so should be fun. Other than that, that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that Saturday at the Westfield Center, I believe it's at, Tim, is it at 9:30 or 10 o'clock? 9:30 for the Easter festivities? And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Bonk Crooks?
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Easter. I have really nothing else tonight. I have some questions, but I'm going to refer it to budget when we go over the budget.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Benedetti?
All set, Mayor. Thank you.
All righty, and Mayor Protem, Pete?
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank everybody and especially Karen Saul for putting together a fantastic budget preview for me and our city administrator, Dean, for, you know, sitting through several hours of going through, you know, the changes. And I think you'll all be, you know, content with what the plan is. I hope you are. And please suggest that you do look over the budget. We do have our next meeting, I think, on Wednesday, so that we're all prepared for questions. I would really appreciate it. It'll make the whole process go a lot quicker if, if you can do a little reading in the next couple nights. I appreciate it. Also want to say happy holidays as well. I want to say that we did a grand reopening for River Q's Bakery on Saturday, and it was so fun and it was so pretty in there, just all the Easter treats or whatever holiday treats that you want to grab in there. I grabbed some Rice Krispy treats for my family, and it is beautifully decorated and just, she's so excited to have expanded and offer a lot more space and, and trinkets for you to enjoy. And likewise, I did eat at Malik Al Khabab on Saturday night, and I have three meals out of the one that I ordered. So, I mean, it was a ton of food. It was really good. That went into the store, or, sorry, the restaurant, and it was, it's very beautiful also. So I know that there were two different downtown business shopping events over the weekend too, so I'm just glad everybody seems to be doing well and trying new things here in Trenton, and we welcome more. There's lots of meetings going on. I hope to have a more clear update for you next time we meet about all the fun stuff that we're doing behind the scenes, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. All right, we'll go to our other elected officials now. Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our assessor, Ms. Barnett, do you have anything?
Hi, good afternoon. Have anything to read tonight?
All right, thank you very much. Our treasurer, Mr. McCullough.
Yes, just wanted to commend you, Mayor, and commend the administration and council for taking the time and effort to go over that resolution for the pension grant funding. I think it's very important to step up and let folks know what, what our opinion is on this, and we've been doing the right thing for a long time, and I think it's appropriate that we receive those funds, and we'll see how it goes. But thank you very much for stepping up, and have a happy Easter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCullough. Appreciate that, and certainly have a happy Easter as well. All right, we'll go to our department heads now. Any of our department heads wishing to speak? We'll go to those in person first, and then any of those on the Zoom. Feel free to put your hands up if you do. No, all right. So we'll go here to public comment now. We'll go, anyone here wishing to speak? We'll go to those in person first and then those on the Zoom. We'll ask that anyone wishing to speak, please begins with their name and address. They direct all questions through me, and that they please limit their comments to five minutes. Anyone on the Zoom, feel free to use the raise hand function under either participants or reactions. We'll get you queued up from there, but take it away, sir.
Yes, welcome, or thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm, my name's William Cox. I'm a fifth generation Trentonite, and I wanted, I'm not sure if I'm addressing the proper people, but I had a, I served ten years in the Navy in a safety billet, both enlisted and as an officer deemed by Congress. And I had a question that is probably not going to be very popular, but it shouldn't cost any money more than the amount of money for a sign, even though a lot of our drivers don't pay attention to the signs. There are more recommendations. But I've observed, I'm a member of the Rotary, the intersection in Fort Street and West Road, we've had at least three different semi-serious accidents. And I don't know if the council has this or if it's Wayne County, but why can't we close that left-hand turn except for maybe emergency vehicles? We already have in place the right-hand turn lane, which, you know, as a member, as far as safety, everything's written in blood for accidents. I've talked to the fire department, that they've been there. I've had a few times where I had to make the Michigan left turn to go, or right-hand turn, excuse me, and I don't know if the, putting a sign saying emergency vehicles would be, you know, for that left-hand turn. I know it's not a popular, but we already have in place a situation to go around without any additional funding. And I think that, you know, as far as public safety, if we can make our roads better and safer for our community, that's what we're all striving for.
So, did you say Fort and West Road was what you?
Yeah, the double intersection where you have the left, I don't, I, you know, I wasn't keen to see what happened, but I've seen the fire trucks have both lanes blocked because there's a, an accident there.
Sure, sure.
And I don't know exactly the nature of the injuries. Some of them are, I know one of them was quite extensive because there were quite a few vehicles involved. So, like I said, I don't know if, because Wayne County, Fort Street is Wayne County and West Road?
It'd be between, yeah, county road and a state road, but we can definitely talk to some folks just to see what the, you know, they, they have to analyze all the traffic stuff there at the county, and so I'll definitely talk to some folks and see what they might be able to do for that and if that's at all possible.
Well, like I said, you know, I just think it would be safe. Thank you for your time, you know.
Absolutely.
I will announce I'm running for council and looking forward to hopefully serving my community as I serve my country. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cox. We appreciate it. All righty, any other folks for public comment? Oh, sir, yep, go right ahead.
John Reedie, 2006 West Jefferson, Trenton, Michigan. Notes to Ireland, trip to Ireland, oh, wrong, wrong meeting. Four or five years ago, I made an effort to approach the Department of Athletics and Department of Education about installing Armiflex insulation, which is used in the refrigeration trade, around the goalposts, around the perimeter of the goalpost to protect somebody who made a header into that wrought iron goalpost from becoming killed or seriously maimed. And it went upon deaf ears. And I said that I would provide the labor if they provided the cost of the Armiflex insulation, which is somewhat expensive. It's a black insulation that's very dense, and it gives you a factor of safety if somebody hit their head against those wrought iron goalposts. It would give you an extra factor of safety where you possibly wouldn't kill somebody from trying to do a header into a goalpost. And I saw one of your mopeds, I was walking with my daughter around Elizabeth Park, and I saw one of your mopeds by the river, and you know where that's going to go? In the river. And they don't obey the traffic signals at all. They go against red lights and, and all of different types of lights. They don't obey the traffic stops at all. And I was just wondering if we could bring up a, a motion to have those goalposts protected in half inch to three-quarter inch Armiflex insulation, wire tie it to the, around the perimeter, so in case some kid doesn't hit his head on it, at least he has a factor of safety of surviving the impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you, just out of curiosity, Mr. Reed, because we, we don't have the ability to do that for the, the schools that'd be the Board of Education? Have you gone to them recently about it?
Yes, not five years ago, I went to the Board of Education, and it went upon deaf ears.
Gotcha. It might be worth revisiting, and I'll, I'll follow up with the school district too, just to see if they've had any consideration for it, but it might be worth revisiting. I mean, especially as you see more and more stuff in the news about concussions and injuries and things like that, but.
The kids are getting faster and bigger.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you very much, Mr. Reed. All righty, we have any other public comment here? Not seeing any hands on the Zoom. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered for adjournment at 7:43. Don't go anywhere, though, because we're going to, we'll go right into our budget meeting here now, so. Should be all right. Yeah, no, I'm going to go up to the podium here. Is it supposed to rain all night, but?
Oh, it's terrible. Yes.
Yeah, it's, the storm was terrible. I was like.
Oh, north of here, bet.
Yeah, it's coming in towards Detroit. Um, yeah, if you want to, it's, yeah, you shouldn't have to do anything with this. I mean, you'll just unmute it whenever you want to start, but.
I'm just going to set this up for Stephen and then I'll.
Yeah.[1457.15] Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to call the study session to order at 7:41 PM. And Mr. Mayor will begin his presentation.
Alrighty, thank you all very much. As usual here, as tradition the last few years, we'll just go through a brief PowerPoint that outlines how we've gotten to this point with our fiscal year 2024 budget, what that looks like for our overall financial status, some of the major highlights or changes, and then kind of things to keep in mind as we go forward here. So, you know, it would behoove us to, you know, kind of look at this in a silo and realize that now this, you know, 101 budget came out of nowhere. This is a culmination of decades and decades and decades of precedent here. But for our overall financial status here, and you know, when the budget being in the 23 and some odd million dollar range, I always, when I talk about it to people, kind of put it in the perspective that, and this is, I guess, you know, one of the first, the last two years or so is the first times that I've haven't been able to say it's like almost the exact same, but our budget, you know, in fiscal year 2000 was only around 20, 21 million dollars as well. So, over the course of that time, we've seen huge declines in our state's shared revenue, huge declines in the value of a mill, huge declines in our staffing levels. Oh, we missed something here. Oh, is the computer on mute, maybe? The Zoom might be on mute, actually. Oh, yeah, I had done that earlier. I apologize. Alrighty. So, we've seen, you know, huge declines in our state's shared revenue that we receive from the state of Michigan, huge declines in the value of what a mill actually brings in budget-wise for us, really big declines in our staffing levels through retirements, attrition, not filling vacancies, reorganizing departments, things like that. But over that time, you know, I think I feel very comfortable in saying that the level of service we provide to our residents is still very much maintained above the level for most of the other areas here around us, and that's something that we take great pride in. Unfortunately, the Michigan Municipal League has not updated their chart in some time. The last ones that they had here were from fiscal year 2017, but I think the picture that it paints here is still the same in terms of how much the state used to give us as part of their revenue sharing versus what we get now. Over the course of that 20 some year period, it would likely be cumulatively over 12 million dollars that we received under previous formulas that we do not receive now. While you kinda, you can kinda see a little bit on here, and it's tough to project out totally, but on an annual basis, it looks like it's probably pretty safe to say that that is between 1.6 and 1.7 million dollars that we used to receive that we do not anymore. And we've had to do more with less in that timeframe. As you see here, while we've seen some upticks a little bit of recent, as property values have rebounded quite a bit, but the effects of the Great Recession still definitely linger here. Property values have rebounded really incredibly since that, you know, 08, 09, 2010 range, but because of Proposal A and the Headley Amendment, our property tax revenues do not increase at the same rate that they were able to collapse, frankly. Whereas before the Great Recession, we were looking at about 850,000 per mil. And in this year's budget, it is about 659,000 is the value of one mil. This budget does not propose an increase to our overall millage rate at all. And again, that value of one mil comes out to just under 660,000 annually, or about 72 for the average taxpayer per mil. Staffing levels, as we, I discussed very briefly beforehand, you know, we used to operate about 200 full-time employees in the city of Trenton. Now, we're below that 140 number, I believe. We've continuously shrunk our workforce through retirements and attrition over the past two decades, but really still have maintained an excellent level of service to our residents and been able to do more with less. And that has certainly come with a tremendous amount of challenges. I think that I feel very comfortable speaking for this group, saying that our employees are some of, if not our best assets that we have. And the work that they do is what really allows us to take pride in our positions here and in our community as a whole. So, through their efforts, we've been able to continue to make this work, but had to get a lot smarter about how we staff our departments. So then, looking at the kind of big picture financial status, you know, we have, obviously, the auditors come in from Plant Moran and all those folks that talk about all these costs on an annual basis. But digging into the budget here, there's obviously some important things as we think about the long-term impacts of this budget, not just in a silo. So, some of those debt obligations, so this, yeah, it's not gonna do anyone good trying to read on the screen, but you can see it in your packets. It will certainly be there. I was telling Councilwoman Bond Crooks here that my PowerPoint's actually six slides shorter than it was last year. And a good chunk of that actually is, well, not just because it wanted to be out of here sooner or anything like that, but because so many of those debt obligations have come off the books from last budget, that we were able to eliminate entire slides because of that. As you'll see, there's three enterprise fund projects. I'm having trouble even reading it on my own screen here. Two of the broader governmental bond projects, and then other internal loans from both the DDA and the Honeywell Project over at the ice rink, too. But so, we had a handful come off the books from this past fiscal year, and then after this current fiscal year, we will have two more. And then, as you can see, others phase out over time, too. So, the smallest number of obligations we have seen on a sheet like this, I think in my entire time on council in the 10 years here, too. So, that I, it's fun to look at now, but I don't want to set the expectations too high because there are absolutely, and, you know, we know this, there are going to be other expenditures that come up, sewer projects, you know, the pool bond that we just discussed the last meeting, things like that. But as of right now, it's at least comforting to see many of those coming off the books and those numbers getting smaller. Overall fund balance, currently, the city of Trenton's overall fund balance is roughly, and this specific numbers will be available in your packets, but roughly 8.9 million dollars is our available, or current fund balance, I apologize, and then 2.7 million of that is the non-restricted fund balance. But as noted there, repayments to the general fund from those do allow for an increased usage of fund balance and more quote-unquote "available" fund balance that is currently non-spendable there. This total budget, that for the entirety of it that we're proposing here, comes out to 23,924,397. With the good accounting standards, you're supposed to have about 15% to 20% of your annual budget as your fund balance. So, for reference, for our budget, that would be between 3.6 and 4.8 million dollars. And as you can see, we greatly exceed that with that 8.9 number. So, very good news there, and at least to be in a healthy position. Millage rate here, you can see Karen's fund spreadsheet. That definitely, very easy to read, and I'm sure everyone is very excited about it. It makes sense to me. You just gotta look at it for a little bit. But as I mentioned earlier, this budget does not propose a change in the millage rate. We are currently operating about a third of a mil below that Headley cap, so it's something, obviously, to continue to be mindful of. But as of right now, we do still have some leeway there if need be. But again, this does not propose any sort of change in the millage rate from what was set last year here, too. Legacy costs, this has obviously been, for years now, one of the, you know, biggest budget items for us and something that we certainly, you know, don't want to fall short of on our obligations towards. Three years ago, this body adopted a resolution to provide for a more consistent amortization schedule for our MERS retirement plan that results in flat rate payments, or flat payments, I apologize, of 2.5 million dollars per year over the course of the next six years, rather than the crazy fluctuating amounts we were gonna get, which were, I think, 3.5, 4.2, 5.1, and then it falls off to 850 grand. And it was just kind of all over. So, for simplicity, that's helped with our budgeting process quite a bit of knowing what those expectations are gonna be, but also, you know, brought a lot more clarity to that, too. Our OPAP ARC, or Other Post-Employment Benefits, basically retiree health care, things like that, was just a little over 3.5 million dollars in that budget, and that is down a huge amount from last year, which was very beneficial to the budget, but dropped, yeah, over 1.4 million dollars from what we had last year. And then, our police and fire actuarial required contribution was just over 2 million dollars as well, which was an increase of about 120,000 from last year. So, after discussions with the department heads, combining their requested budgets, we had a balanced budget. We didn't have to go back through, you know, cut out things, talk about, you know, major restructuring or things like that. As you'll see in the memo Karen had put towards the front of that, there weren't any grandiose requests from departments. They kept their costs in line. They knew that, as we'd talked about for years prior, that this was going to be one of our last tougher budget years before some of those other big obligations came off the books. So, I feel that as a whole, while, you know, we're not doing anything grandiose or planning to do anything cool, these are obviously things that we can, you know, amend as they come up over time. But right now, we were able to balance the budget without changing the millage rate and without using fund balance at all. And so, that's something that I have to give a lot of credit to our department heads and to Karen and Dean as well for making sure we were able to do this. But again, this is a, you know, temporary document for us here, and going forward, there are certainly going to be things that we have to think about. For example, you know, we have, as was part of our motion earlier, we've got a closed session for contract negotiations. Those are things that are still ongoing, and we'll certainly end up having to make budget amendments to help make sure our employees are taken care of. We do have some of those debt obligations coming off the books, as we pointed out there, that will help free up some of our available fund balance in certain areas. As everyone here is well aware of, as we just talked about at the last meeting or two, the pool bonds that we'll have to look forward to and making sure that we keep our facilities maintained, along with a variety of our other infrastructure projects that we're gonna have to look at. Included in here, well, actually, I'll touch on that a little bit later on, but capital projects review, as, you know, we've seen our Pacer study, the capital projects that we've gotten from our engineering department and the plans related to so many of those facilities, and how each of our departments are doing some of that longer-term forecasting and what those needs are going to be, along with our continued road improvements, whether it be through our concrete or asphalt replacement and creative ways that we might have to look to get more local road improvement money. I know that, I feel pretty confident that Trenton probably has some of the best local roads around, and I, you know, not to toot our own horn, but I feel like it's not super close. But from that same token, we still have, we've seen the Pacer study. We know of all the improvements that still do need to be made and need to make sure that we continue to be on top of these things. And then, lastly, this budget does include money in it for an overall building assessment for what our needs are between our police station, our fire stations, our DPS building. But to get a professional opinion on, you know, what that might look like, what the costs are going to be, and that's certainly going to be a, you know, several years-long project, will likely require bonds and, you know, something that might be, have to be voted upon. But we at least certainly owe it to our folks to get the ball rolling on that and make sure that they've got a safe place to work and frankly, buildings that we can be proud of, too, as we would want our, you know, neighbors, residents, businesses and things like that to uphold the high standards of our buildings that we want to hold them to as well. So, that is actually going to conclude my presentation here. Obviously, the gritty details are all in the binders that you all have available and certainly want, encourage you to go through all the line items with that. I know on Wednesday evening, we'll have all of our department heads here as well to answer any questions that you may have for each of those departments or anything like that. But certainly, if anyone has any questions or comments or anything now, certainly happy to answer. But I will turn it over to Mayor Protem Pate here for the remainder of the meeting.
Thank you. I'd like to open the floor for any comments or questions for the mayor at this time.
I have one.
Yeah, please, Rick.
You made a comment under Mayor about fund balance. Can anybody in this room tell me the last time we didn't spend fund balance? She's hiding behind. It's been a while, though, right?
We balanced the budget immediately, but then some, something will come up and we use fund balance.
Right. But I don't, I don't remember them ever not taking something, at least, which attributes to the people sitting over here on the right, that you did what the mayor asked you to do, which is awesome, and we appreciate that. You know, yeah, I know we have things like negotiations and things coming up, but I can't remember a time when it wasn't in there from the beginning. So, I think your department heads did a great job, and you and Dean did an awesome job, too.
Yeah, normally, I am, I've gotten quite used to, you know, that first number is like, I think I had to edit it out. It was 1.4 million one year, it was 1.7 million the other year, and so when we were starting at zero, oh, all right, cool. Yeah.
Don't know why we didn't think of doing that before. That's all I got. Well, you know my other comment, but you know my cancer.
Any other comments from council? Oh, I'm so sorry. Councilperson Bond Crooks?
Yeah, I was talking to the mayor earlier about our engineering staff, about how we're doing with, you know, going outsourcing our engineering department. And he seems to think that we're saving money and they're doing a pretty good job. How are we doing in-house in our, you know, building and engineering department as far as, you know, getting things expedited, getting things done? That's a concern when a resident comes and says they need this, they need that. How is our staff doing in-house with taking care of, you know, what needs to be done and also, you know, how we've outsourced?
Sure. No, I.
Both things.
Yeah, I think, so, yeah, kind of separating the two of them. I think engineering is frankly, it's worked out fantastic for us. And I was flipping through, but I can't find the exact page that it was in there. But, yeah, I mean, the department is operating, I think it's safe to say, cost-neutral with, you know, where our permits and fee structure is, you know, making up for the entirety of the salary and expenses and things like that that come out, which is a really incredible place to be, and it's, I think, saving us annually over six figures in total. And so, the output that we've gotten there has been really, really encouraging. And then with building, too, that's something that, you know, we continue to, well, we're gonna have some staff changes in there, too, and continue to try and make sure that, right, we're at the fullest staffing we possibly need to be so that residents are getting things addressed, and especially as oftentimes the first interactions that people have in the community, too.
That, and also that they're getting their permits expedited quickly, that they can get their projects done.
Mm-hmm.
Because it does keep up the city of Trenton.
Oh, 100%, yep.
And businesses, they can get things expedited quicker.
Yep.
And that they're greeted and taken care of, you know, cordially. And, you know, I just want to make sure that level is good. Another thing, a question I have, the rotary park, the boardwalk down there by the water.
Mm-hmm.
Where are we at with that?
Yeah.
What kind of money are we putting there?
We, I don't recall what the exact number was for the full phases. Tim, do you have to, I hate to put you on the spot for. Yeah. Was it, yeah, somewhere just under 2 million or so. So, this does not budget anything for that first phase, for that 600 some thousand. We are looking at options, whether it be through grant money, that I know, Tim will have some good news for us, not 600,000 worth of good news on it for. And then, we're gonna have some discussions, yeah, with some other authorities and things like that for what opportunities for other money. They're still very much at the forefront of our minds. It's something that we still absolutely need to get done.
Yeah, I went down there the other day, and it's kind of, looks scary to me. It looks dangerous. It looks like something that shouldn't really belong in the city of Trenton.
Yep.
That we're not used to that level of, you know.
Erosion.
Yeah, it just, it just doesn't look good.
Mm-hmm.
So, that concerns me. Police, fire, DPS, the new building for them concerns me. That's part of the futuring that I think we need to do.
Sure.
And these buildings are antiquated. They're not getting any better. And so, that really, I mean.
Yep.
We can say we've got a balanced budget all you want, but guess what? We got a lot of things that need to be done. So, you know, when I see things, and I don't mean to belabor this, but I see things done, like fireworks and things that are a, you know, and I love fireworks, and I appreciate Tim going out to get them done and stuff, but when I see 50,000 spent on that, when I think there's things that really, I mean, we need to address. And I mean, I've said it long enough. I think these things, you know, we got all the wants, but what do we really need?
Sure.
And this is, concerns me. Another thing that I've brought up earlier to you was the outsourcing, the lawn cutting. We did it all in-house at one point in time, then we decided to sell off all of our equipment, go outsource. We decided the outsourcing was not as good as we did it in-house.